I love the school. The students are like really nice. The teachers, they really positive. And yeah.
Like the teachers. At my old school, I never asked questions with my teachers. And now at this school, since my mom went here, so I basically know all the teachers that's here. So now I can express to what I'm feeling and what I need to ask.
My friends, you know, yeah, because, you know, the education is pretty good. The teachers are great, you know, but my friends is the best part.
I like most about Hammond Central is definitely the students, the people, you know, all the people I met since I've been here because I moved here from middle school. So like the people have been great. I made a lot of memories since freshman year. It's happened my year, all the years, you know.
Some days you gonna have days where like you don't want to come. But like, like the days I come, like it get funner and funner as like I get in the older grade. But it's not, it's not easy, but like when you do what you gotta do, it become easy. So it's really just, she had to.
It's good. There's never any like problems or nothing. Things always like good vibes, everybody like chill.
I like the people. I like the community. I would definitely say it's fun. It's definitely creative. Like you definitely don't know what you're gonna get coming through the door every day. In a, in a good way though. I would say it's safe, it's loving. It's definitely welcoming.
The teacher is the most about the school. To my experience, Sam Warren's pretty good. I don't have any complaints. Atmosphere is good here and there's, there's good people here.
Because um, when she teaches, it like actually makes me want to actually try the things she teaches because of the way she, she does it is so like inspiring to me.
Go nation, let's run.
I love the school. The students are like really nice. The teachers, they really positive. And yeah.
Like the teachers. At my old school, I never asked questions with my teachers. And now at this school, since my mom went here, so I basically know all the teachers that's here. So now I can express to what I'm feeling and what I need to ask.
My friends, you know, yeah, because, you know, the education is pretty good. The, the teachers are great, you know, but my friends is the best part.
I like most about Hammond Central is definitely the students, the people, you know, all the people I met since I've been here because I moved here from middle school. So like the people have been great. I made a lot of memories since freshman year. It's happened my year, all the years, you know.
Some days you gonna have days where like you don't want to come. But like, like the days I come, like it get funner and funner as like I get in the older grade. But it's not, it's not easy, but like when you do what you gotta do, it become easy. So it's really just, she had to.
It's good. There's never any like problems or nothing. Things always like good vibes, everybody like chill.
I like the people. I like the community. I would definitely say it's fun. It's definitely creative. Like you definitely don't know what you're gonna get coming through the door every day. In a, in a good way.
Good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025 special board meeting regarding our teachers contract. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Salinas?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Trustee Guerra?
Present.
Trustee Spencer?
Present.
Trustee Stafford?
Present.
Trustee Candelara?
Present.
Trustee Blake King?
Present.
We have five present. We do have a quorum. We can move forward. Mr. Salinas.
Good evening, trustees, President Blake King, community members, and members in the audience. The first agenda item for today is our public expression first period. Trustee Stanford.
Thank you. First speaker is Marcia Shannick? Shannick. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna get it.
My name is Marcia Shannick. I am the elementary trustee for the Hammond Teachers Federation. I was also part of the negotiations team for the Hammond Teachers Federation. I teach fourth grade at Edison Elementary School. I've been teaching in Hammond for over 40 years. I am not at all proud of this settlement. I am not at all proud of how the negotiations process was conducted. I'm not sure what instructions were given to the team representing the school city Hammond, but I can't say I'm proud of the work that was done. I'd like to draw your attention to page 16 in Appendix A. I made several comments a week ago, the things that need to be corrected. We still have problems here in Appendix A. The salary range, 49,000 to 86,000. I'm not sure why this new salary range does not reflect the raise in the base pay, nor why the Appendix B, why those salaries weren't adjusted up to $1,000 to represent the raise in the base pay.
Excuse me, could you go back to your first?
Uh huh. Page 16.
My page 16 is a, is a sign in sheet.
Well, okay, my page 16 is Appendix A. And, and herein, herein is another problem. Is that there were so many collective bargaining agreements shifted around. Now it's this one. No, now it's this one. No, now it's this copy. That's a problem in itself.
Thank you.
So I, I, I'm in Appendix A. I should, maybe I should say that. Okay. Appendix A. At near the top, the salary range, 49,000 to 86,000. I'm not sure why those salaries weren't adjusted to ref, to reflect the new increase in base pay. Then at the bottom, the schedule is suspended for the 25, 26 school year. That was never bought up during the negotiations process. I don't know why that is part of the collective bargaining agreement. We never agreed to that. I, I, we, I have teachers now saying, well, what does this mean for us? What does this mean? How am I gonna get paid? I, I don't know how to answer those questions. On page 17, the provisions regarding the salaries of new hires reflected will be in effect for the 25, 26 school year. New teachers want to know, what does, what does this mean for us? What does this mean for the 25, 26 school year? I don't know how to answer those questions for them.
At what point, okay, for clarity purposes, there were several, if I understand, there were several concerns that you had at the last meeting. Were those two issues part of that? May I ask the question? Is that in order? Because I don't recall those two issues.
Yes, I brought those up at that meeting.
So an additional, my understanding was things were corrected. So when, so you're saying when you got the new?
Mm-hmm.
That it still remained in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we should take a recess so that we can talk to our labor attorney and get this figured out.
Trustees, do I have a motion for recess?
I have motion for, I move for a recess.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second that we take a recess. An eight-minute recess.
What did she say?
Ten move?
Five or 10?
Five or 10?
10. If we need, if we need, if we don't need all the 10, we will be back. Is that good? Okay, thank you.
I can't get in, so I can't.
Thank you for your patience. We're back in session Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, special meeting on our teachers' contract. We will now have Attorney Dixon to come.
We need to finish public expression.
Oh, public expression. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, next and last speaker, Dr. McHale.
Hi, everybody. Good, good evening. I just want to say like, as a person that's a completely like external party to everything, I don't get the sense that the board is trying to do anything contentious or that the teachers are trying to do anything contentious here. I think everybody wants a good solution, wants to come together in a good way. But it just, it's, it's a little befuddling when somehow, even though nothing else has changed, there's all this stuff in the middle that gets in the way. I just, I hope we can get something done today, tomorrow, et cetera, with state, whatever, that moves things forward so that immediately we can kind of turn over a new leaf or build a better foundation for something going forward. Because I think there are so many people who are perhaps even more external than I am to this situation that want some contentious nonsense or to put a bad impression out there. And for whatever reason that all this confusion has happened, now, um, you know, there's a lot of people that are gonna try to make this into something that isn't. But I, I truly believe, again, I'm always encouraging every school board, your governing body, you are the legal authority. You're the people that are legally responsible for everything. And if it's just like a procedural thing where now maybe the old system of let's let other people do the thing and we're gonna trust somebody else to handle it and trust everybody to do the thing is not working anymore, then maybe let's just reevaluate that moving forward. Because I definitely, of all the situations in this county where, you know, I might have expected something like this to happen, it wasn't here. And I don't think it happened again because anybody having any ill will toward anybody else, I think just at the end of the day, there's a lot of pressure and there's a lot of learning curve as I think people are trying to learn new ways to go about things in a, in a better fashion. And I really do feel like, you know, the board is trying its best, the teachers are trying their best. You know, I believe this board wants to support teachers. And again, like maybe we just need a more active role moving forward. At the end of the day, that's not a thing that you're not allowed to do. It's all there in state statute. At the end of the day, everybody else is your employee, everybody else. So do with that what you may and I'll be praying for a good outcome. So thank you so much and thank you to the teachers and the union.
Thank you. That's our last speaker for public expression.
Thank you, trustee, thank you, trustee Stanford. Before we go to item 3A, we would like our corporate attorney, Attorney Dixon to come before the board, please.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight you'll be voting on the recommended contract between the school city of Hammond and the Hammond Teachers Federation. The two teams, we have been meeting since September. I feel and I thought the team felt that we came up with a resolution that satisfies both parties. We worked very hard and I felt had productive meetings. I will say to address concerns that have been addressed tonight, I believe there may be a disconnect between individuals and the attorney for the Hammond Teachers Federation, Attorney Jeff Macy from Indianapolis. Appendix A, which is the question tonight, that was submitted by Attorney Macy. And we looked at that and we were fine with that, but that came from their attorney. As far as Appendix B, at the bottom of Appendix A, it does state effective January 1st, 2022, a salary schedule with equal differentials has been incorporated. This schedule is suspended for the 25, 26 school year. Mr. Attorney Macy was also involved in that. The next page starts out with for informational purposes only and then goes on to explain what that salary schedule does, which is not affect, in effect for this year, nor was it in effect for last year. As far as the $1,000, under the compensation model, their teacher is given $500, an increase for an eval, for their evaluation if they're highly effective or effective, as Ms. Smith spoke about last week. Also for experience, if they have a minimum of 120 paid days the previous school year, they receive another 500, which equates to the 1,000. And it has to be split up. You cannot put all your eggs in one basket, as they say down in ERB. We then have for the academic needs of students, we gave a $250 increase to the base salary upon notification of certi, certification for the early literacy certification. The state had required that we recognize that and we agreed to give $250 for that. It also talks about the teacher retention of a $750 stipend, teacher cost of living of a $500 one-time stipend, and then a certification incentive stipend of $250 for a temporary teacher slash emergency permit if they become licensed by the end of the school year, which was what Ms. Smith talked about last week. Having said that, after the board votes tonight, if agreed upon, the contract once ratified by the teachers, hopefully ratified by the teachers, the contract will then be sent to Gateway through the Indiana Education Employment Relations Board, known as ERB, and we hope to get that completed as soon as we get our signatures. Okay?
Are there any questions of attorney? So you are recommending to approve this contract tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, what's your pleasure for item 3A, ratification of teacher collective bargaining agreement? Do I hear a motion?
Madam President?
Trustee Spencer?
I move for the ratification of teacher collective bargaining agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second by, oh my God, by trustee Candelara for the approval of ratification of our teachers' collective bargaining agreement. Are there, are there any questions? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you. And the last item on our agenda is for adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved. I mean, it's been moved and probably second for the adjournment. See you on the 16.